Attention, December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two, Planning and Zoning Division meeting for the City of Pocahontas. If you will all please stand with me for a moment, so I can pray.
Our legislative agents to comply with the United States Constitution, into the Republic, which stands one nation, one power, indivisible, every individual.
We have a public comment section related to each agenda item. If there is anyone here from the public that has an item they would like to discuss or would like to have a moment of public speaking, please let us know now, and we can do that now. If not, when your agenda item comes up, please let us know, and we will give you your minute. All right. Item number one will be the approval of the minutes of the planning commission meeting held August ninth, two thousand twenty-two. Have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve. Chairman?
Motion and a second. Anyone in favor, please say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Number two, approval of minutes from the planning zoning commission meeting held September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Washington, do I have a second?
I'll second, sir.
Second by Commissioner Doomey. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Motion to approve of the minutes of the planning commission meeting held October eleventh, two thousand twenty-two.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to give them for those minutes.
Motion by Commissioner Arundo, thank you.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ryan, thank you. Anyone, everyone, uh... Everyone in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Approval of minutes for the planning commission meeting held November eighth, two thousand twenty-two.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Washington, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arundo, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number one, the item is a comprehensive plan, small-scale future land use amendment. Location of three, four, zero, five, West Poncan Road. Owners Philip and Patricia Simmons. Applicant is P and P BuildCon LLC. Project manager Roxanne Reed. Mrs. Reed?
Roxanne Reed with the Community Development Division. As you said, this is a small-scale future land use amendment. The request is to recommend approval of this future land use map amendment from county rural to city very-low-density suburban residential for the property at thirty-four oh five West Poncan Road. The size of the acreage is nine point nine five. This property was annexed into the city on November sixteenth of two thousand twenty-two. This application is being processed simultaneously with an application to rezone the property. The existing future land use here, you can see, is county rural. The proposed is the city designation of very-low-density suburban residential. They're proposing a nineteen-lot subdivision on the property, and today we did receive the school capacity determination. It's not a formal letter, but the formal letter will be coming on Thursday, from what we understand. But I put that there at your station, so you can see what was determined by Orange County Public Schools. The Development Review Committee is recommending approval of the change in future land use, and the recommended motion is to find this proposed change consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code, compatible with the character of the surrounding areas, and recommending approval of this change. That concludes the presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Does anyone have questions of staff? All right, is the applicant available here for questions?
Okay, Ryan Solstice, LPG, representing the applicant, P and P BuildCon. I'm here to answer any questions. I also have the concept plan, if you'd like to see it as well.
Absolutely. If you'd like the presentation, go ahead.
Today, we are requesting a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment to change the future land use of the site from agriculture to very-low residential suburban, as well as to rezone the property from agriculture to RSF one B, which is large-lot subdivision. In this case, we are proposing nineteen lots on-site for the nine point nine five acres. Most of the lots throughout the subdivision are greater than the minimum requirement of eight thousand square feet. I'd say almost all of them are over that minimum requirement of eight thousand square feet. This is a large lot that will be developed once platted, either by the applicant or by individuals who will be interested in buying their own homes and buying the land for that said specific property.
Great. Thank you very much. Anyone have questions of the applicant?
Just repeat that. Did you say the individuals will have an opportunity to buy the lot and build their own home?
Correct, yeah. So, at this time, the applicant is going to plat the lots and then sell them individually. If there is, if someone approaches them next door, is D.R. Horton. If D.R. Horton is interested in building on those said lots according to the RSF one B standard, then the applicant might entertain that offer from them. But at this time, they're going to plat the lots and sell them individually, and then there'll be custom homes in here.
Thank, just a comment. Thank you for making these lots larger than the minimum. That's great.
Any more questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public here which is to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I find a proposed change in future land use from county rural to city very-low-density suburban residential consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code and compatible with the character of the surrounding areas, recommending approval of the future land use amendment based on the findings and facts presented in the staff report and exhibits.
Motion by Commissioner Arundo, thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Is that you?
Yes.
Okay, didn't hear. Second by Commissioner Stanley, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Did you hit your red button? Okay, good boy. And I don't. Okay. Item number two, change of zoning, same property, three, four, zero, five, West Poncan Road. Owners Philip and Patricia Simmons. Applicant, P and P BuildCon LLC. Project manager, Ms. Roxanne Reed.
This is Roxanne Reed with Community Development Department. This is the request to change the zoning from county A-one citrus rural to city RSF one B for thirty-five, thirty-four oh five West Poncan Road. And this is the existing zoning with the county A-one, and then the proposed zoning is RSF one B. Development Review Committee has recommended approval, and the recommended motion is to find this proposed change in zoning consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and the Land Development Code and compatible with the character of the surrounding area. That concludes the presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Anyone have questions of staff or the applicant?
I do. I meant to ask this last time. Would this property be subject to HOA control?
HOA control? I'm assuming that it would. Is that the applicant's preference?
So, at this time, we have not discussed whether or not we would implement an HOA for this subdivision of this size, but that is something that we can bring back to the applicant and discuss with them. The purpose of the subdivision right now is just for those custom homes, so an HOA might not be the best fit for a custom home subdivision. But if that is something design standards that the commission would like to see, we can entertain that, absolutely.
The only reason why I ask, I don't have to be defensive about it, but some people like HOAs and some don't. So, what I thought to be interesting about this, you have lots that people can buy, and they can put anything they, well, that's reasonable.
Within the confines of the code.
You know, and some people might like that. Some people, when you say HOA, they just say, no way, Jose. That's the reason why I was curious about that.
Thank you for your question.
Sure.
Thank you, sir. Any more questions? Anyone from the public here which should speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I find a proposed change in zoning from county one dash A citrus rural to city RSF dash one B, consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code and compatible with the character of the surrounding areas, recommend approval of the proposed change of zoning based on the findings and facts presented in the staff report and exhibits.
Thank you, Commissioner Washington. Motion by Commissioner Washington, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Stanley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Owners Timothy Lee Strickland, revocable trust. Applicant here, this Capital LLC. The location is three-ten Conrad Road. Project manager, Ms. Roxanne Reed.
This is Roxanne Reed with the Community Development Department. This is a request to approve a change of zoning from T Transition to IL Light Industrial at three-ten Conrad Road. This property is twenty point seven acres in size, and this industrial-light zoning district is compatible with the existing future land use designation of industrial and is compatible with the uses planned for the subject property and the existing uses in this area. The applicant does plan to use this as an industrial property. The Development Review Committee has recommended approval, finding that the proposed change is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code, and the recommended motion for the planning commission is to find that this proposed change in zoning from T Transition to IL Light Industrial is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code. That concludes the presentation. I believe the applicant is here for questions.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Reed. Anyone have questions of staff?
I, yeah, I have a question, sir.
Commissioner Doomey?
Yeah, you said you were, there was a plan to use this for industrial. Did you have any further information on exactly what that is?
That was all the information that was provided to us. The applicant, I'm sure, can shed more light on that. I believe the applicant is here. Okay.
Good evening. Alex Mezdaq with, for the applicant, Mezdaq Wallen Hamilton, here to answer any questions. If there's any of a question about the potential use, it will be for light industrial distribution. We don't have an exact user at this point, so it's just to be, to have the zoning in place for when the time comes to have to, to put in, submit a site plan and so on, but it will be consistent with all, and all the other uses in the area and submit, you know, subject to design standards of the city and other requirements.
So, there's a chance this will create jobs for the area, though?
What, I'm sorry?
This, this development will create jobs in the area, correct?
It would, yes, yes. It'll be light industrial.
Any more questions of the applicant?
I have a question. Commissioner Ryan? So, this property backs up to protected wetlands, as you know, correct?
Correct.
It's a little bit overlapped.
Pardon me?
Isn't there a little bit of overlap with the property?
I don't believe that it does. There's, uh... Now, you know, if you look at the site...
I think there is a little, it's hard to tell, but I think there's a little bit of overlap on, on the western end.
Are you talking, maybe on, to the extent, any on the, on the west side? But, uh, you know, if you look at the wetlands, it's primarily going to be, you know what, there would be a buffer possibly further on the west side.
Yeah, the entire west side is all covered by wetlands.
To the extent, I mean, those wouldn't, either there'd be mitigation, those would be left alone.
How are you going to protect the wetlands?
Pardon me?
How are you going to protect the wetlands?
They would be fenced off.
Is it regular fence?
And not impacted.
They aren't delineated with the land use and zoning changes, so that, that comes at site plan time.
Right, right. Well, I'm, I'm looking ahead.
It would be set to the water management districts.
I'm sure it's going to come back when it wants to develop this.
Sure.
So, that's something, that's something for you to think about.
Definitely.
Mr. Hit, do you think I asked too many questions?
It doesn't pertain to this particular item, though. It's, it, you know, when you, when you, when you start talking about the access or anything else, it's, it's, this is just a land use or, in this case, a zoning change for the property.
Yeah, I'm looking, like I said before, I'm looking forward, and there's something for them to think about next time they come up in front of us.
Yep.
Do you think, do you think that's unreasonable?
You're a step ahead. You're a step ahead. That's okay.
You think I'm being unreasonable?
No.
Okay.
I'm just letting you know all of a sudden, the timing.
Well, the attorney tells me that quite often, too.
Any more questions of the applicant? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So, anyone from the public wishes to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to find the proposed change in zoning from T Transition to IL Light Industrial on three-ten Conrad Road, consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code and compatible with the character of the surrounding areas, recommend approval of the proposed change of zoning based on the findings and facts presented in the staff report and exhibits.
Motion by Commissioner Stanley, thank you. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Ryan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number four, Ward Family Properties Partner LLC, change of zoning. Applicant, Vinge Development Corporation. Location, three-nine-five-one West Kelly Park Road. Project manager, Ms. Roxanne Reed.
This is Roxanne Reed with Community Development Department. This recommendation is to approve the change of zoning from MUT, Mixed Use Transition, to KPI MU, which is the Kelly Park Interchange Mixed Use with Village Center assignment for the southern portion of this parcel, which you'll see here. Okay, the existing zoning is Mixed Use Transition, and the portion here is, is what is proposed. You'll see the southern portion of the parcel here, which is seventeen point six acres, is what they're proposed to change to KPI Mixed Use with that Village Center assignment. This is another one that the school capacity letter that you have there at your stations was produced today, and they will produce a formal letter on Thursday. This is, as well as the previous project, shows that there is no capacity in any of the schools, but we've been assured by Orange County Public Schools that they can use adjacent schools for their more formal letter, and that elementary and middle school will be accommodated, but it will still fail at high school level. So, the Development Review Committee has reviewed this, and they recommend approval of the change in zoning from Mixed Use Transition to KPI MU with the Village Center assignment for that southern portion of the parcel. And then the recommended motion is to find this proposed change in zoning compatible and consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code and compatible with the character of the surrounding area. And I believe the applicant is here if you have questions for the applicant.
Thank you. Does anyone have questions of staff? Anyone have questions of the applicant? All right. The applicant would please come forward.
Okay, I thought the applicant was going to be here, but...
Well, I can ask the staff this question.
Okay.
The exit, so there's going to be a southern exit on the property, correct?
Right, it's just for the southern portion, and you can see it kind of lined off here with the yellow line, just that southern portion of that parcel.
So, looking forward, looking in the future, will it line up to the parcel that's being developed just south of it? Will that line up with their entrance?
I believe they are working on that, making sure that it's lined up.
Yeah, yeah, Pam Richmond's working with both, both property owners on the south and on the, to the property on, to the west, because it'll, it'll have to do a little bit of a jog to the west in order to line up more perfect with Golden Chum.
Because I'm like, I'm trying to avoid something like on that Rock Springs Road, where you got that exit there at McDonald's, and you got that dollar store, and it's just, it's very dangerous there. I mean, there's a lot of accidents. I'm trying to avoid something like that here.
Yeah, that's, that's the whole idea, exactly what you, you, you mentioned, is to not do that, to basically line it up directly across the street from each other.
Because we're not dealing with Orange County here, right?
It's, well, we're, well, it's all compatible. We're, we're, we're still in conversation with them with any, with anything that's happening on Kelly Park.
Okay.
For sure.
Any more questions? So, anyone from the public wishes to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
I can do this, Commissioner. I find motion, make a motion to find the proposed change in zoning from the Mixed Use Transition, MUT, to KPI MU, Kelly Park Interchange Mixed Use with Village Center Assignment for the southern portion of thirty-nine-five-one West Kelly Park Road, consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code and compatible with the character of the surrounding areas, recommend approval of the proposed change of zoning based on the findings and facts presented in the staff reports and exhibits.
Thank you, Commissioner Doomey. Motion by Commissioner Doomey, do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Washington. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number five, this would be quasi-judicial, correct, Jim?
Yes.
Item number five is quasi-judicial special exemption to resume operation of a gas station in conjunction with a convenience store in the MUD Mixed Use Downtown Zoning Districts. Owner, one-six-eight Elgin LLC. Applicant, Jonathan Hules. Location, three-twenty-two East Main Street. I need to ask, has anyone from the commission had ex parte communication on this matter?
No.
No.
Seeing none, bring it back to Mrs. Roxanne Reed.
This is Roxanne Reed with the Community Development Department. The request is to approve a special exception use permit to resume operation of a gas station in conjunction with a convenience store within the MUD Mixed Use Downtown Zoning District. And this is located at three-twenty-two East Main Street, and the tract size is point four acres. This gas station has been vacant for over a hundred and eighty days, triggering a special use permit. Special use conditions of approval are listed in the staff report, and they must follow these review standards that are shown here, and I believe you have a copy in your packet of their responses to these review standards. Development Review Committee is recommending approval of this special exception, and the recommended motion is to approve a special exception to resume operation of the gas station in conjunction with a convenience store within the MUD zoning district. I believe the applicant is here to answer questions.
Mrs. Reed, question, can you bring it back to the overhead view of that? Question I have for that, it, it has, the parking in the back is not attached to that in any way, is that correct?
Correct, that's a different parcel.
Is there...
I think that's, are you saying, well...
Directly south of it?
Directly south, correct. That is the church.
Okay, so it's just the, it is just simply the, the yellow area is the only parking?
Right.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any more questions of staff? Okay. Does applicant have an applic, or, yeah, presentation? I know he's got an application, pretty sure.
Do have an application. Happy holidays, chairman and commissioners. My name's Jonathan Hules with the Lowndes Law Firm, two-fifteen North Yola Drive, Orlando, three-two-eight-one. We concur with staff's recommendation and the proposed conditions. Happy to answer any questions you have. It's been a pleasure, of course, working with Ms. Reed, Mr. Hit, and Gene on this one, so...
Anyone have questions of the applicant?
I have a, I have a comment.
Okay, Commissioner Doomey?
Glad to see something going in there, back in that empty gas station. I'd prefer it to be like a little artisan sandwich shop, but we'll take a gas station over an empty building, so...
Agreed.
Yes, I, I go along with Commissioner Doomey's expression of, about this. I've always been sensitive about the look and feel of a Pocahontas, and particularly Main Street. When I see vacant businesses, it bothers me deeply, and so I'm glad this one is coming back alive. So, if you can remember to do this, please express that to the owner. I appreciate he or she, whoever it is, that's making that place alive again. It improves our image.
Yeah, and, and there will be an infusion of capital to, to update the, the building with, obviously, whatever, whatever brand is selected to come in there. There will be a new monument sign that will be brought up to today's code. There's going to be some repair work done to the dumpster enclosure, and really, based on the size of this parcel and the fact that right now it's, it's undergoing FD, a state-funded cleanup for a release of petroleum that had occurred back in the eighties, it really had, it, it doesn't marketable for any other use at this time. Now, in the future, as downtown continues to evolve, and, and as the new code works and starts to be applied, as businesses are redeveloped, I think there might be an opportunity for perhaps another use, but for right now, I think this is the best that can be had. Appreciate your words of support.
Sure. Any more questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Hule. Anyone from the public just speak on this matter? Sir, you need to come to the roster and we give your name and address for the record.
My name is Magnol Reategi, I'm a neighbor right there on Midland Avenue.
See, we need to get your name and your address, your actual address, for the record, sir.
Right here, okay. Yeah, my name is Magnol Reategi, I'm a neighbor right here at the Midland Avenue. All I was asking is, do we really need another gas station there? Why don't, still working to develop to have a better business there here, like the, we are starting right there, the Pocahontas Center? I think we should come up with a whole area that we have in mind, you know? Instead to be, gas station, we have a gas station, we have two gas stations, one each side on the road. Do we really need another gas station right there in the small area there, you know? That's my opinion. It should be, it should be another type of business that brings more life to the, to the area. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone have any comments, questions?
I, I, I'll say, I agree with, with your comments, but, you know, the applicant did say that it, the best use is a gas station because of different environmental and, and reasons that exist, and there might be a chance in the future to repurpose it, but the second thing I would say to that is, you know, if you believe that, put your money there, you know, invest in the business, and, and maybe, maybe you can do something like that.
Anyone else? Okay. I would comment that I, I understand your concern, and, and that's always a, a point of contention, is, you know, do we need another one of these or another? But a, at the end of the day, the, as the applicant had stated, there's some cleanup stuff going on there, and the size of that lot kind of dictates it's very difficult for other uses, and the cost would be really prohibitive, and so our options are kind of, okay... and the cost would be really prohibitive, and so our options are kind of, okay, do we let them put the gas station back there, or do we just, if we deny it, leave it vacant the way it is? Because not really anything's gonna happen, especially with the EPA, you know, mandate on it, there's really not a lot of options here. So, I do understand your concerns, but there's other issues that kind of mitigate that. All right. Anything further? Bring it back to the board for a motion.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve special exception to resume operation of the gas station in conjunction with convenience store within the M U D mixed-use downtown zoning district, subject to the exhibits, findings, and conditions of approval listed in the staff report.
Thank you, Commissioner Stanley. Motion by Commissioner Stanley. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rundo. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item is another quasi judicial. Lux Car Wash Special Exemption Use. Owners Sylvia M. Humphrey Living Trust, Cortez Raymond E., Summer Kenneth A., and Summer Bonnie J. Applicant is Jadish Singh, care of Gregory Crawford PE, PSM. He don't have a location here. Look over here.
There's three lots, four lots.
Okay, there we go. 1752, 1760, 1774, and 1778 Rock Springs Road. Mrs., goodness.
It's me.
Hello, Mrs. Sanchez, project manager Jean Sanchez.
Good evening, Jean Sanchez with the Planning and Zoning Division. This is a request for a special exception to allow an enclosed car wash use within the C C Community Commercial District. The property is located west of Rock Springs Road and south of Tanglewood Drive. They have a future land use designation of commercial and, as stated, within the C C zoning district. It's approximately 4.5 acres vacant and surrounded by retail to the south, residential use on the east and northwest of the public shopping center. The applicant is requesting a special exception used to construct and operate an enclosed car wash facility. The car wash will be conducted within an enclosed building with access via private drive to Rock Springs Road. It is also intended to combine with other four parcels and create three lots that includes two lots reserved for future developments. To the greatest extent practical, the applicant is required to comply with all site design and other standards, including landscaping buffer specifically required for special exception uses. It is also subject to construction site plan review, and during the C S B review, the Development Review Committee will further confirm that proposed project will provide adequate and safe access as well as complies with the rest of the land development code. Per Land Development Code, Section 2.5.1, special exceptions are required to comply with the following standards shown, and they are also outlined in the staff report. The applicant has provided responses to the special exception permit criteria, and those responses are also included in the report you have. The D R C recommends approval. The recommended motion is to approve the special exception to allow an enclosed car wash within the C C Community Commercial Zoning District. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. I was remiss, I needed before we go any further, has anyone here had ex parte communication on this matter with any? Thank you. Okay. Any questions of staff? Commissioner Ryan?
Yes, okay, so tract A, that's a separate parking lot, correct?
For lot A, for lot one?
Tract A, it says between lot one and lot two.
Yes, it's on street parking, correct.
That's a separate parking lot.
Yes, sir.
Okay, then there should be one, at least one accessible parking for people with disabilities. Because it's a separate parking lot, it's not considered part of the old parking lot.
The intention for the parking that's there on tract A is actually, I'm sorry...
Name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, my name is Greg Crawford, I'm with Florida Engineering Group, 5127 South Orange Avenue, Suite 200, Orlando, Florida, 32809.
Thank you.
Those parking spaces are actually going to be associated with part of the development for lot two, so when lot two actually is developed, they would anticipate on going ahead and taking those parking spaces plus the proposed ones to provide whatever ADA access is.
Right.
At this time, they wouldn't be providing any of those that actually provided next to the building when lot two is done, and those parking spaces would count towards that.
Yeah, that's what I figured, but they still need to have accessible parking there.
Right, it would be for the overall development, correct?
So, they'll, when they're put in, there'll be accessible parking in here that's not listed?
That's correct, yeah. For lot two, they would provide the required ADA parking at that time.
Thank you. Any more questions of the applicant?
I do.
Commissioner Washington.
Couple of questions. Recently, this organization has been concerned about stormwater management, flooding, in a couple places in Apopka that the city is currently dealing with, so I'm always looking at that now. Unfortunately, you're going to get it. But here you have, you know, engineered-in stormwater management. How confident are you that this pond is going to be sufficient when we have another tropical storm or hurricane come through town?
Well, what we've got is that when we go to design stormwater ponds, we meet different city and state requirements with regards to stormwater management, and they have certain criteria with regards to what storm event is there. And so, we go through and design according to that in order to try to take and control our water on-site according to what they basically mean annual in the 25-year storm event. So, they are designed to try to accommodate, to make sure we don't have any issues with regards to the banks of the pond blowing over, as far as having berms blow out in order to let the pond evacuate like it's not supposed to. But what would happen is actually for a 100-year storm, we wouldn't be designing strictly for that, but based on our stormwater, we would be able to take and try to control part of that on it, as far as not necessarily having 100% of all this water going downstream. Don't know if that answered your question or not.
Well, I hear what you're saying, but the, one of the existing problems we have right now in the city is that the problem was not anticipated when it was first, the projects were first built and installed many years ago, now it is an issue. And I'm not an expert on all the details of what the city and engineering group and St. John's Water Management District are talking about, but apparently, though, there are different sources of water that have been contributing into the lake at issue that's developed over time. That's all I'm thinking about. So, you have the car wash, you have water being redirected, I'm sure, back to that stormwater pond. What about water from the housing development that's directly behind? I know you're gonna have an easement, not an easement, but you'll have something, a buffer between the housing development to the west of the project and your building. How do you know the water's not gonna continue to come down from that housing project into your pond?
There is a certain portion that comes through there, and we'd be directing it, as far as being able to collect it and direct it around the property in order to discharge as normally would be during normal storm events. So, we'd be collecting that water to not block it off in order to take and create any floody issues upstream. We'd be taking, still collecting that water and not blocking it.
Okay. I'll just go to a different question. A lot of people in Apopka who travel up and down Rock Springs Road, especially during rush hour, do so with concern for their safety. As that traffic goes up and down the road, and if you want to make a left or right turn, you gotta take a breath. Commissioner Ryan, I mentioned it, where you have the McDonald's and you have the Dollar General Store, you know, people trying to make a turn into either one of those businesses, you gotta, you gotta start praying there sometime. So, I'm just thinking about your project, and I know you have note here that your business will take advantage of the existing traffic flow. And that's nice, but what about, and that's nice for southbound turns into your project? I'm thinking about the person who's going northbound, they're going home, they need to get their car washed, and they get in that middle lane, and all of a sudden, you got a little issue there, to me. What do you think about that?
Well, we'll be meeting, right now, Rock Springs Road is actually a county road, so we'll have to take and work with the city as far as what their concern is, trying to address any safety issues for turning movements into and out of the car wash, but also be working with Orange County. I know then, working with Pam on this, and we've actually had discussions with her trying to address potential issues with regards to traffic at the entrance here, and it's really looking at more than likely, it's going to be a right-in, right-out only, and probably a directional left turn, so that actually traffic coming out of it would not be making a left turn heading north onto Rock Springs Road. So, it'd be strictly a directional left coming for northbound traffic and turning into the site. So, that would help control with regards to some of the turning movements that are coming into and out of the site in order to try to minimize as far as conflict points with potential cars on that. So, I know that'll be something with regards to a traffic study that would be done in order to take and make sure that at least what work is being done within Rock Springs Road is sized to accommodate what the anticipated turning movements will be into and out of the property.
You understand my point about somebody going northbound on Rock Springs Road and they want to make a left turn to get their car washed? You understand that, right?
Correct, yeah.
You understand my point? Okay, all right.
And what happens is basically when they do the design, it's based upon certain trips per day and certain left turn movements and such like that during a peak hour, so we'd be making sure that we addressed any of those items with the traffic study to make sure that it gives a correct stacking and try to keep cars, the opportunity to be able to pull off the travel lanes in order to take and make that movement.
Thank you, sir.
Any more questions of the applicant? All right, thank you, sir. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, bring it back to the board for a motion.
I can do the motion, sir. I motion to approve a special exception to allow an enclosed car wash use within the C C Community Commercial Zoning District, subject to the findings and exhibits of the staff report.
Thank you, Commissioner Doomey. I have a motion by Commissioner Doomey. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Ryan. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number one, the replat of McVilla Commerce Park. Owners Farish Enterprises LLC. Applicant Interplan LLC. Location 1629 McVilla Avenue. Mrs. Reed.
This is Roxanne Reed with the Community Development Department. This request is to recommend approval of the McVilla Commerce Park replat of Lot 3B. And you can see this is the aerial here of where this is located on East Seminole Boulevard. The tract size here is 10.2 acres, it is being replatted, and the applicant is proposing to replat Lot 3B into lots one and two, as shown here. The Development Review Committee has recommended approval of this replat, and the recommended motion is approval of the McVilla Commerce Park replat Lot 3B, subject to the reviews of the city engineer and city surveyor and the findings in the staff report. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Mrs. Reed. Any questions of staff or the applicant? Seeing none, do we have anybody from the public that would wish to speak on this matter? Pretty sure that's enough. Bring it back to the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the McVilla Commerce Park replat Lot 3B, subject to the reviews of the city engineer and city surveyor and the findings in the staff report.
Thank you, Commissioner Washington. Motion by Commissioner Washington. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Stanley. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number two on site plans, Low Family Warehouse, major development plan. Owners, the Low Family Trust. Applicant, Land Design E., care of Brian Foster PE. Location would be 3838 Hog's Head Road. Mrs. Sanchez.
For the record, Jean Sanchez with the Planning and Zoning Division. This is a request to recommend approval of the Low Family Trust Warehouse, major development plan. Property is located at 3838 Hog's Head Road, west of Hermit Smith Road, south of, and east of Conrad Road, and south of Hog's Head Road. Aerial shows that the project is surrounded by industrial centers. The Low Family Trust Warehouse is located at 3838 Hog's Head Road, and the major development plan proposes the development of an industrial center that includes the proposal to construct one building and five future buildings. The applicant proposes a warehouse and office for storage and distribution uses with 66,000 square feet of area and approximately 19 acres. Current proposed building on the northwest corner of the property will support online retail operations of plant-related merchandise. While 15 parking spaces are required for this building, the applicant is proposing a total of 39 parking spaces with two accessible spaces. The proposed maximum building height is 35 feet. The development of future buildings will undergo separate reviews. The D R C recommends approval, and the recommended motion is to recommend approval of the Low Family Trust Warehouse, major development plan. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. Anyone have questions of staff?
Yes, I do.
Commissioner Ryan?
This looks like an old nursery at one time, I assume, correct?
Yes, sir.
Has this been tested for toxic chemicals and hazardous waste material?
They, yes, they're required to go through an environmental assessment report, and the report came out fine.
And they submitted...
Yes, sir.
I do have a question for the applicant.
Evening, Brian Forster, 100 South Orange Avenue, Suite 200, Orlando, Florida, 32801.
Okay, I'm looking at your accessible parking, you have two spots there. As I understand it, they're supposed to be the closest spots to the entrance. You just need to move them down two spots to the west and then be ADA compliant.
Actually, if I may clarify that, it does not, the ADA does not necessarily, does not use the term closest, it is the most accessible route. So, if that location is the most accessible route, that's what the ADA regulations call for, it's not closest.
Well, I disagree with...
Well, it's the law. I'm telling you what the law is. The ADA regulations are, the parking spaces are to be located at the most accessible location.
That would be the closest.
Not necessarily. Depending, there's certain, I've...
Okay.
I'm just stating that, it's not...
Are you willing to move them over two spaces?
Well, based on the feedback, the reason why they are shifted a little bit is because of the setback between the building and the sidewalk in order to fit a ramp, since there's curb in front of those spaces, they had to be shifted slightly so the ramp is not directly in front of the front door.
Are you willing to move them over to be ADA compatible?
I mean, we can work with staff. If they're not ADA compatible currently, then yes, we'll work with staff.
So, you're not willing to move them over two spaces?
I, well, I think based on...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Commissioner Ryan, you're framing a question in a manner that's incorrect. No, you're framing a question that's incorrect and making, trying to answer a yes or no question. He is currently ADA compliant. What you, if you want to frame that question, say, would you be willing, if we request you to move those spaces over, not, are you willing to do it to be ADA compliant? He is ADA compliant, as the attorney's already said, so, you know, you can't beat the guy up and say, you're not within the rules, when he is within the rules. You can ask or request, can you please move the spaces over, but not, you need to move the spaces over because you're not ADA compliant. That's not correct.
Okay, are you willing to move them over two spaces?
Yes, sir, if that would still be ADA compliant, then we have no issue with that. I mean, I agree with the attorney, I'm not sure that they would be, if we can move them and still be ADA compliant, we have absolutely no issue with them.
Okay, we have a disagreement, all right.
Okay, any more questions of the applicant?
No, sir.
Does anyone from the public wish to speak on this matter? Thank you, sir. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to recommend approval of the Low Family Trust Warehouse, major development plan, subject to the findings in the staff report.
Thank you, Commissioner Stanley. Motion by Commissioner Stanley. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rundo. All in favor say aye.
Question, question.
Question for staff, question for the applicant, or a comment?
Well, you, someone made a motion, I presume, and someone seconded the motion?
In discussion.
Correct, now it's discussion. Question.
Before the second?
Before the vote.
Before the vote, we can.
All right, so I'm just a little confused, are we asking the applicant to move the spots or not? All right, so I'm just a little confused. Are we asking the applicant to move the spots or not? Or are we, are we voting on the application as presented? I just want to be clear.
We're voting on the application as presented.
Okay, fine. Go ahead. Move on.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Stanley. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Do we have any old business? Do we have any new business? Seeing none, we will close the meeting.